Okay. It is seven o'clock. I'll call to order the June 5th meeting of the Amity City Council. Please rise and join me in the flag slot. Tasha, will you take role first, please?
Yeah. Counselor April Day?
Here.
Counselor Sandy McCarver?
Present.
Counselor Caleb Shields?
Here.
Counselor Alice Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Melissa Bohrquez is absent. And Mayor Rachel King?
Here.
Thank you. Um, before we move on to the consent agenda, I'm just going to, um, propose that we look at new business and switch items A and B as well as F and G if no one is opposed. Hearing no opposition, we will move into the consent agenda, which has budget versus actuals and minutes from our regular May meeting, our budget committee meeting, and our work session.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We'll move on to citizen comments and questions. This is an opportunity to present items not on the regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Um, we saw the Yamho County Sheriff's Office report in our packet. I don't see anyone with us here. Is there anything for staff to add?
Um, I don't know if there's anything specific.
Any questions to pass on? Alright, um, do we have a dig report this evening? Seeing none, I will open it up to any other comments or questions from the audience. And I'm not seeing any online. We will move into public hearings. So, the Oregon budget law requires that the council, like the budget committee, hold a public hearing to give the public the opportunity to comment on how their tax dollars, including state revenue sharing, will be used. I will now open a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed budget and state revenue sharing. Anyone that would like to provide testimony? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to resolution number 2024-04, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024-25. So, this resolution sets suspending limitations by appropriating funds and also imposes and categorizes the tax at a rate of 3.6105 as adopted by the city council.
Mayor King, may I just have a-
Yes.
Sorry, may I just add a comment about the budget, kind of in general? Um, as Tasha and I have been working through it with the auditor, just to check over everything over the last few days, we discovered, we had some confusing advice about where to get the fund balances from, um, and, and so we've, we're pretty sure that some of the fund balances are slightly off, based on the audits that we've had recently. Um, in general, though, the fund balances are considered estimates, even when they're in a budget, um, because, you know, you don't know where you're at until the audit shows you where you're at exactly. And so I just wanted to make you aware that some of those fund balances, sorry, are, are off and we're working through where exactly they should be. In general, the audit has them actually higher than where we are. Um, the one exception is the water fund, where the multitude of capital projects have led to some confusion there. There's been a couple of years where we've, like, missed recognizing, um, some revenue, um, for some of our bigger projects, and we're still working through the details on that. For the budget itself, for the expenditures and revenues, those are staying the same. Those are where, where we were at, with the one exception of Tasha noted that we had not rec- not previously recognized, um, 191,000 in revenue that we got in, was it 2022?
Yeah.
Yeah, we ended, we got two essentially disbursements of ARBA funding for pretty much the exact same amount, and we recognized the first one and failed to get the second one into our budget. Um, and so we recognized that additional general fund revenue, and then we also, based on the comments from, uh, that we'd had in the budget committee meeting, we bumped the water repair and maintenance just back up to where it was this year. Um, I had had it a little bit lower with the hope that we would spend less, but given, you know, that we want to focus on training and getting our new water plant set up correctly, uh, and with the hopeful news that our, our water fund balance was a little bit better than we thought, then we just changed that back to 85,000 in total.
Which should have been highlighted in the one night sentence.
Yes.
So, I was gonna ask, because the recommended motion says as described by the city administrator, those, at least those two things that you just highlighted work in the budget that we got in the packet. So, that's, yeah, okay. Alright.
I move to approve the budget as described with the changes, um, as the city administrator has explained, and approve resolution 2024-04, a resolution adopting the 2024-25 fiscal year budget, making appropriations and levy, levying and categorizing ad valorem taxes for the city of Amity for the 2024-25 fiscal year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions, questions, or comments? Um, all those in favor of approving the budget as described by the city administrator and approving resolution 2024-04, a resolution adopting the 2024-25 fiscal year budget, making appropriations and levying and categorizing ad valorem taxes for the city of Amity for the 2024-25 fiscal year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We will move on to resolution 2024-05. And this is, um, election to receive state revenue sharing.
I move to approve resolution 2024-05, a resolution declaring the city of Amity's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2024-05, a resolution declaring the city of Amity's election to receive state revenues for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We will move on to resolution number 2024-06, and this is certifying that the city meets all requirements to receive state shared revenues for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
I move to adopt resolution 2024-06, a resolution certifying that the city of Amity meets all requirements to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution 2024-06, a resolution certifying that the city of Amity meets all requirements to receive state revenue, state shared revenues for the fiscal year 2024 and 2025, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Um, and this is where we will move in to old business, of which we have none, and new business, and we switched up, um, items A and B. So, we will start out new business with the recology rate increase. I'd like to invite up Ernie. He's here to join us.
Mayor King, members of the council, thank you for having us. I'm pleased to be here today. Uh, normally it would be Dan Luke, he's our community manager, he's the manager. He's speaking here at another meeting, he's in close with the recology, so you're stuck with me. Did you get a little nervous in front of the council?
I'm your chair last time, sorry.
With Mark.
Huh?
Mark.
Thank you.
So, I'll just be going over some talking points, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So, one thing we'd like to remind everybody, we're proud of it, is we are the only waste company in the state of Oregon that's employee-owned. And we're also the largest waste recycling company that's employee-owned in the nation. Uh, this evening I'll provide a brief update on our Amity collection operations and share data, rate projections, as well as our request for a 6.75% rate increase for all services, with the exception of commercial frontload services. We're proposing a 13.3% rate increase for the coming year. Uh, you should have a, a rate review documentation of those rates in your closing pack. Uh, collections update. Collection operations in Amity remain unchanged from last year, though we did have some announcements regarding staffing levels, uh, in our McFinnville-based operation. First, one of the recognized drivers who serves, who service Amity in other areas of the area. Uh, residential garbage driver Randy Hamel, uh, he's 46, been with us for 46 years. Resident, residential recycling driver Rob Porter, uh, 22 years. Your, uh, residential yard degree driver Matt Ube, he's been with us for 41 years. Your commercial glass driver Rachel Brown, he's been here for one year. Residential glass driver Adrian, uh, Uwa? Sorry, that's tough. Uh, three years. Commercial garbage cardboard driver, um, per se, he is Tony Shanafell, three years. And your commercial garbage driver Maggie Towers, been with us for two years. Collectively, that's 118 years of driving experience with all of the western organs to us, for city. Uh, we have approximately 580 customers signed up for service in Amity. And those common customers are 90 gallon weekly garbage, every other week, uh, every other week you say. Subscription services, we have yard degree, we have about 100 customers signed up for yard degree. Other updates, uh, we're using all R99 renewable diesel for our collection operations. Our commitment to R99 is voluntary, helps drive demand for that renewable fuel source, much cleaner in terms of emissions and particulate matter. Um, some of you may know that we, uh, we suffered a cyber incident back in October. The corporate shut down our computer systems, um, and we finally got them open everywhere. And, uh, some of them just now, um, in the last month or two are up. Um, but we're still recovering from that incident. I am happy to report that all our systems are back online, and day-to-day collection services continue throughout. Uh, the impact period, thanks especially to our drivers and our customer service representatives, and everything you have been on the ground. Moving on to customer service updates. Um, we have fully staffed from McFinnville customer call center. The more wait times are decreasing, we still feel that there's room for improvement, and we're working on that. Another issue we had in the systems crash, we just hired an office manager, so she didn't get the, the fair training that she deserved, uh, because we didn't have the systems to train her on. But we're good. Recology supports the following events of sponsorship or in-kind donations of service. There are some examples of events we have supported. The Yamho County House, House Hold, has those waste cleanup event. This is a great program that makes homes less toxic by getting those chemicals out of garages and basements, which we know is appreciated by fire departments in the county. We supported the, uh, or we support the Oregon National Air Show at McFinnville, with services of long service from our company. Uh, we support the Amity Education Foundation. And then, uh, the Amity cleanup, I have some numbers for our last Amity cleanup. Uh, we haul 10.57 tons of bulky waste, 0.57 tons of metal, uh, 0.12 tons of yard green, and 0.79 tons of electronics. In all, it's 24,460 pounds of unwanted material removed from your system. Uh, we are looking to fill our waste zero specialist position to reinvigorate, uh, our upstream waste reduction efforts by working with businesses, schools, and facilities. Now onto the rate review process. As shown in, uh, our packet, we are proposing a 6.75 rate increase across all lines of service in our collections program for our franchise agreement, with the exception of commercial frontload service. We are proposing to increase commercial frontload rates by 13.38%. This is projected to bring us a bit below the operating margin target expressed in our franchise agreement of 12%. We'll send the rates, bringing us to projected return on revenue of 89.88% for the coming year. Without a rate adjustment, we are projected to have a 2.29% return on revenue for the, uh, current 12-month period. We are asking for the 6.7% for residential services and the 13.38% for commercial services just this year to maintain pace with the inflationary pressures that we continue to see in the market. We're seeking a lower than allowable rate adjustment, recognizing that a rate increase can be a burden on some customers, and we want to mitigate that while still being in the allowable range. We certainly don't want that back next year with more customers, so we're trying to ratchet that a little bit towards that allowable 12%. Uh, some of the cost factors that justify rate increase include, um, the Western Region seat guy was up 3.6% from March 2023 to March 2024, when we completed the rate reveal, and we anticipate a similar increase throughout the next 12-month cycle. Neighbor costs are up, uh, at the Valley due to filling remaining vacancies, employee retention. Currently, we are full staff. Disposal costs are up, so when we pick up the garbage, we used to take it to Riverdale, my own hill. They closed down, now we'll take it to our transfer station, dump it there, reload it, and take it all the way to Corvallis, uh, off view. So, uh, off view, uh, rate is up 7.59% at the time from 39.50 to 42.50. Additionally, uh, recently the transfer station will increase the rate of calling companies 4.99% from 6.71 to 7.120 at, uh, July 1. Other operational expenses, carts, containers, parts, and components are all up over, uh, three this year. With some items still hard to get, we need to do supply chain issues. For example, we ordered a truck three years ago, and it used to take about nine months to get a garbage truck, and it took us almost a full three years, so we just gotta think a month ago. Uh, good news to offset some of the other pressure is that recycling markets have turned around. I don't know if you remember about 10 years ago, the, the market just crashed, and there was a point where we couldn't get rid of the recycling, and then there was also a point where we're being way more encouraged to, uh, have it processed. So, it's finally come around, because last year we were paying $100, close to it, uh, to have it processed. Now, we're actually getting paid $15 a ton, so it's a bit of a transition. Although the price of fuel has evolved out, up over $4 a gallon, it's, uh, recently dropped down to the $3.25 range for, uh, vehicles. Uh, in our renew process, we identified that our commercial frontload service rates have not been adequately adjusted in recent years to address actual cost of service. Uh, because of this, we are proposing a 13.38% increase for commercial. So, so they figured that in order to get us to the 10%, we were 12% to target, we're going to the 10%. The 6.75% is gonna get us most of the way, and then the, uh, the 13.38% for commercial gets the extra 9K to get us into that 10%. Unfortunately, that's half of the, uh, the, the, the number we are at, so to speak. So, we'll be back next year for a little more commercial, hopefully, as much. Given those cost increases, and in order to maintain the operating margin expressed in the franchise agreement, we are seeking a 6.75% rate increase in all services other than commercial frontload. Uh, 13.38% commercial frontload rate increase on service rates. Uh, with that rate adjustment, the 32 gallon weekly garbage customer with recycling will see a $39 per month rate decrease, bringing the rate from 2066 to 2205. Uh, so 90 gallon weekly garbage customer for every other week you say. The most common customer in Amity would go up $2.33 per month, from 34.47 to 36.80. And then for, say, like, a one yard, uh, frontload garbage dumpster, it'd go up from 1.69.44 to 1.81.99. For a, a three yard frontload garbage dumpster, it's gonna go from 3.60, 3.36.81 to 3.61.73. These rates are drastically lower than, uh, McFinnville, but more of a similar city like AP. It's, uh, quite a low investment. I, with rate adjustment, it's like $10.20, it's a lower investment. That's all I have, so if you have any questions, that's all I do about rate increases.
Any questions from council? Um, and I had the opportunity to talk to Ernie briefly before the meeting, and he's gonna follow up with some number questions I had.
Next, and I actually did, did, asked her to do that, may I?
Yeah, if you don't mind, yeah.
So, she doesn't understand why they, they did it this way. But when you add these up, you have that number, and then, and then this here is the projected for 2025, you, these two, you put that, you put that number. Not sure why they did it that way. And then, uh, the 9K for, uh, commercial is going to be this number. And I could certainly have somebody reach out to you that, to walk you through that.
Um, no, that makes sense. So, I ask because if you look at the cost of services report and you look at the adjustments and projected changes, the number at the bottom of the column didn't add up to what it should. Um, but he's showing that they added the projected changes along with the increased, the projected rate on the third column, adding those together is the total of the adjustments found in the middle column. Thank you. It is very confusing. I wouldn't have taken all those steps without some explanation, so thank you. Um, and thank you for all that information, I have to say. Um, we really appreciate our Amity Cleanup Day, so much so that we have expanded it to twice a year, and we love Recology's partnership in that. Um, 24,000 plus pounds of trash out of the city is great for one and two days across the year. I don't think we have anything else for you tonight. Thank you for being here. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Um, so we have the item in front of us. Any further discussions or input from, or questions for our staff? If nothing, I would ask for a motion.
I move to accept the rate review report as submitted and acknowledge Recology's limited rate increase.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, second, to accept the rate review report as submitted and acknowledge Recology's limited rate increase. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, now, we will move on to the CCRLS intergovernmental agreement. So, we saw the annual agreement for library services through Shemekka to Cooperative Regional Library Service, the amount paid to Amity for its participation. Um, for this fiscal year is 9,648. Um, in the current fiscal year that we're in right now, that was 7,935. Y'all had a chance to look through that agreement. It's the same as we've seen every year. Um, the amendment just had to do with the yearly allotment.
The yearly allotment, and then the, uh, it updated contact people. Like, it updated, like, who to contact as part of the contact.
On their end and our end, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Include me, and then Doug Yan.
Oh, that's good. I didn't side by side them, I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so section 18 notices and section 19 contact persons.
Were there any questions on that? I had the opportunity to check in with Ann and just to say, I know you signed it last month, but it'll be before council this month. So, there's nothing, I'll ask for a motion.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Shemekka to Cooperative Regional Library Service and authorize city administrator to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Shemekka to Cooperative Regional Library Service and authorize the city administrator to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We will move on to Amity Day committee appointments. Um, and we received an application from Jenna Goings. I don't see her here with us this evening. You guys all had a chance to look at that. And, um, the city currently has one vacancy, so is this the last vacancy that we would be filling?
I believe so.
Correct. Okay.
As a voting member.
Yeah.
Yes. Anyone that would like to be part of the Amity Day Committee is welcome to come. Right, this appointment would just be for the last voting member.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Everyone's welcome.
And side note, I already asked, uh, our administrator's permission, but I do plan to try to make the next meeting. Yes, so, um-
Everyone's welcome.
Everyone is welcome. With the application in front of us, but no applicant in front of us, I will just ask for a motion to appoint unless there's a motion otherwise.
I move to appoint Jenna Goings to the Amity Day Committee with the term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Jenna Goings to the Amity Day Committee with the term expiring December 31st, 2025, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We are happy to have that spot filled and happy to have Jenna join.
And our next meeting is next week.
Next Tuesday, June 11.
So, if anybody would like to come, we will be here.
Oh, do we have a conflict of venue?
No.
Okay, great.
It's the hour before.
Okay.
Just a busy night. Excuse me. Um, so we'll move on to item D, also having to do with the Amity Day event, and I will just hand this to you, Nathan.
Yes. Um, there's been a little bit of, uh, back and forth, trying to figure out the best way for a committee to work through an event planning process. Um, I've had a few conversations with the city attorney, and, you know, there's a tricky line there between operations, which we can talk about and just do, and then policy, which does need to come back to the committee. Um, I believe we're working it out, but in order to, uh, to more fully move forward, I wanted to bring this back just for a little bit of clarification. When I first wrote this resolution, it was last year, and I was a few months in. It was very vague in what it actually set and allowed the Amity Day Committee to do. Um, you know, it, it has a few whereas's and gives a few details that way, but as far as what the committee's supposed to do, all it says is serve as a standing committee to the city council. Um, it doesn't talk about the event, or- It doesn't talk about the event or how that works. And then in one of the phrases, it says that the city council will commit a limited amount of city staff time and resources. And that's part of what I hoped to get some clarification on. If Amity Day is going to be like a full city event, city-sponsored event, then it may be worth, well, I think it would be worth dedicating more staff time to it and just saying that it's gonna be a city-sponsored event. We're gonna help. We're gonna work as hard as we can. We certainly want everybody's help. We want, we're gonna lean on the committee as much as possible. But staff will be involved in working toward it. And I think at the time, we might have been, you know, kind of feeling overloaded as staff, but I think we're good to help with this event. That this one will be worth the extra effort and staff time, so.
Tasha, do you have something? This is news to me. Nothing was talked to Mona about it.
I think my understanding was Nathan actually needs council's permission for any staff time even of his own.
Yeah, it was limited staff time. I counted myself as staff too. And so, I mean, I've certainly been helping with the committee and, you know, hope to do more and so it was more of a, are we good to like dedicate resources to it or not?
Because that was my understanding is that before you dedicated any more of your time, it's not like you're just gonna hand this off to staff to take care of. I don't think that's what the Amity.
No, 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 no. It was just that, you know, we're giving him direction like work on ODOT permits or not direction, but we're asking for help with things like ODOT permits or things like that. And it's how much of that can and should we be doing?
Me versus the committee, yeah.
Correct. So that's where we kind of felt like we needed to come back and decide, do we need to make this? Or talking about funding and spending money, you know, is this something where we say the city manager or this, you know, the city administrator has, the city administrator has a budget that he's allowed to spend.
For this event.
For this event, you know, up to a certain amount of money, that type of thing. Is it something that we let him have control of that budget? Or is it something that we give the committee to have control of that budget?
So in my understanding of that is if it is a committee that reports to the council, the committee would probably need to come before the council to request a budget.
But that's what we were talking about is the way that that was worded.
No. Leaves it, leaves it kind of open and what council could essentially do is say, Nathan, city administrator, make the event happen. Here's your budget of this much amount. And then have the Amity Day committee function primarily like as advisement and help set, you know, certain.
Because the committee was set up very vaguely. So that's what we need to have is clarification from the council. Because the way that Nathan was talking with the attorney and with us is that the way that the original resolution was set up, it was set up very vague. So we need to have, we need to have it clarified. Are we having it set up as a committee with set boundaries like that? Or are we having it set up the other way where it's more, that's what we need to have clarified.
So for budgetary reference, the proposed budget coming year has a thousand dollars for the Amity Day committee. So it would be once a year, but let's say we're looking into the future. Once a year, the Amity Day committee coming, say this is our committee, this is what we propose to do. We request a thousand dollar budget is what I'm seeing. Like obviously this year, it's the first year. We just wanna make it happen. But in years coming, we would know that.
So my question is, would they come to the council and say, we request this budget, here's what we wanna do? Or is that money already set aside for them? I guess I'm curious, because like the tourism committee knows that they have that money to spend.
But the tourism still has to come to council before they spend it. And so I'm saying at the, we're a year behind on this. But what I'm saying is because that committee reports to the council, you don't wanna say, here committee, have a thousand dollars, do whatever you want.
Right.
It would have to be, even if it was like coming to the July first meeting and saying, this is what we have planned, this is what we need, we're requesting a thousand dollars for the Amity Day committee. And then ask staff to be in charge of that, right? Cause he's the signature or whatever. And then to make it happen. Does that make sense to council? Instead of just having like a pool that they can.
Right.
Throughout the year. It would just be, so then you're still reporting to council and council is like approving it? Just because I think that's how it's worded in the resi, like.
Because, but the resolution is loose. But the resolution is loose right now.
Just like tourism.
Yeah.
As a committee serving, a standing committee serving the city council, that is generally how you'd think about it is.
But this year, we're in a unique position of we set up the committee last year. It's happening this month. We have a thousand. So, yeah.
But it, but it is a situation like Nathan says where it's a little bit different and we need to, I think, define his role in it because it is a little bit different than just like saying tourism where it's.
Right. And I think there's two separate subjects. And I was just, I was just leaning on the, the money thing is that if it's not too late, maybe just at our July meeting, the council could be, you could request appropriate, the full thousand dollars.
Well, I think that that thousand dollars needs to be for next year's Amity Day. I don't think that you can do that.
As of July first, you can.
Yeah.
Right. I'm just saying that there are gonna be expenses for this Amity Day that are gonna need to be spent before July.
Well, PGE gave you seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Well, I wasn't aware of that. We haven't had a meeting.
Well, PGE gave it to the city.
Which is allocated to them.
But I mean it.
But they would still have to request it from us.
Has to decide to spend it that way.
So if you have things that, because what I'm seeing is that budgetary line would not, like it would, that's something we wanna be able to build too, right? Like build over time. If you don't use the seventeen hundred dollars, it's still gonna be there. So beginning next year, you would have some seed money. That's a standing committee. You could come at any time and request whatever.
Are you wanting it set up like tourism then, where it has income balance?
That's, I think we're saying that's, that's where it is right now, but not necessarily budget wise. It doesn't necessarily need its own.
No, but we can keep track of it so that every year.
Okay, like we were doing in the past, but not.
Because there's an opportunity that the Amity Day committee could also be raising funds. You know, or have donations given to it.
And say, we might be able to get more sponsorships. We might be able to.
They could have, yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna go as far as on bank account, but you know what I mean? Like to grow. And so. So on the money part, I think there's stuff that needs to be working out. Worked out, but I think we can all acknowledge that there's like immediate costs right now. It's coming up quick. You guys need to be able to access that. If we could get some rundown before next month.
Yes. I think also some clarification on, you know, do we want it to be a city event similar to Movie in the Park, right? Where we, city staff just did it, right? We just spent the money that was in the budget for the movie in the park. We're planning to, you know, with council's help, with volunteers' help, right? But we didn't bring, like, we didn't bring Movie in the Park back to council. Or does council want to kind of retain that control over Amity Day? And have the committee report back and bring back decisions and things like that.
I, maybe like the first year, just to know where the money is going as you're figuring it out. You know, we don't need to know that the city's spending this much on popcorn for Movie in the Park at this point.
But it's on committee either. But Amity Day's a committee. Or Movie in the Park is a city event. Would we approve the allocation with committee?
I think as long as it's a city-sponsored event, a lot of these have different entities do their day. Like they'll have lots of, like, the fire department would be involved and the whatever would be involved. As long as it's just the city, it needs to still come back to council. We can't just have a city-sponsored committee just doing it on their own and not be coming back to council. No committee, just because of the setup of it.
My question is though, if people. I'm just thinking there could be, there are going to be some last minute things. Like maybe they need to cook a garbage bag. So they need to do this. So they need to do that. If they come at the July first meeting, the event is at the end of July, how are they gonna come back to council with what their needs are?
If, if you came to council on July first and said, this is our plan. Nothing really has been reported to council. So if our plan is to have a parade at this time, these, this is the amount of vendors we have. This is what we're trading. This is this and this. And we also request a thousand dollars to complete this. And then we say, we approve. And then it's, you know, and then next year you could do that and we'll have to budget ahead and plan ahead a little better. Next year, you could come do that in March with monthly updates, but it would still be reporting to the council.
I just need to know what we need to come here in July with in our hands.
Yeah.
Cause our meeting next week is going to need to have all this information available for July.
Well, and I'll also say that for like to pull off the Daffodil Festival, in the two months before it, we meet every other week and then every week. So.
So in, in all transparency, this committee has four people on it. Only three of those people have been active and out of those three people, we haven't had all of us at a meeting together in months. So it's been two people and it hasn't been the same two people at any meeting.
Well, and I definitely think.
It's been very difficult.
That lends to needing more staff support, which is anyone uncomfortable with? I mean, it sounds like Nathan is willing.
Nathan has been a huge help.
But just wants kind of.
Yeah, if Nathan's in staff support.
I think Nathan needs.
I'm not saying we won't help. It's just we're not involved. I mean, they haven't got a meeting. We haven't, we don't know anything about the Amity Day.
And I think the staff that we're talking about is Nathan and not you and Chrissy. I mean, Chrissy, I'm sorry.
Mona.
So.
I mean, we have a lot on his plate too.
I'd say going forward, I would love the ability, the staff time to also loop in Tasha and Mona. They're a huge help, huge asset. They have way more experience with event planning than I do. And so I'd love to, you know, loop them in and have them involved as much as we can balance with everything else we have.
And I guess we'll know more next week.
But I think, I think what Council Dyke and Nathan are looking for council now is just support in that. So Nathan doesn't feel like he's spending his work time on something that council hasn't requested he do. I'm fine with it. We all want this to get pulled off. We wanna do it. It's a learning experience, I think. Get done what needs to get done. I think we'll also have to be, we don't wanna overload staff. That was from the beginning. So.
No, and you know, we're doing things like trying to get the vendors and the parades and the things like that. But he's been totally invaluable, I mean, for things like PGE and the ODOT permits and things like that. The stuff that he's, you know, dialed into is stuff that we just couldn't pull off. At least not in the manner that he's able to pull it off.
And I think it comes down to that if the language is limited staff time and then our staff questioning, well, what's limited? What's crossing that boundary?
Can we say reasonable?
Yeah, cause the week after, I'm planning now, Mona and I will be planning national night out literally the week after, so.
Right, right.
We got that going, we got audit, we got just finishing budget. So it's, that's why in the beginning, I'm like, we can help, but it's not gonna be how we do like harvest party and we're moving.
No, no. And I don't think that's ever been the intent to involve staff. I think it's just asking for, you know.
The permits, I guess.
And, and I, you know, I think that it has been this type of situation where if we ask help of staff to always check in and say, is this too much? Is this okay? Is this, at least I know I've tried to do that with Nathan to say, is this okay? Is this overreaching?
And I think after this year, you'll have a better idea of what your task list is. And better be, you know, if you know your date, you can look for those permits, like when he's, you know, got time.
I do have to bring up though, the issue with funding. If you, if you expend everything in July, you will not have any, you will not be able to spend anything until the following July.
Right.
So if you start coming in March for money, you already would have spent.
Right. And that's why we were thinking, yeah, that's why we were thinking that the money from July one this year would be for next year. But there's not really anything in the budget for this year out of this last year's budget. So, yeah.
So just something to think about.
So we'll just have to wait and see. But maybe there's some fundraising that can be had. And the hope is too, if we, you know, if we're able to pull off a successful event, that we'll have some people who wanna get involved next year.
So is there an immediate need for more than the seven hundred and fifty that has been donated to the city?
I don't know. I think we have to talk about it on Tuesday. I know we need to get signs and I don't know what other expenses we were talking about. We haven't really brainstormed all of those, I don't think. But I know signs was the biggest issue we had.
Talk about signs and banners, you know? If we have sponsors, right? Do we wanna banner for the sponsors in the parade and like that kind of thing, so.
Well, I'm just thinking at this meeting, we could make a motion to allocate the seven hundred and fifty dollar donation to the city of Amity to the Amity Day committee for expenditure in this year's event.
Yeah.
And then that takes the pressure off.
Yeah.
Because realistically, it's going to take money to pull off an Amity Day with a parade and vendors. You have to start with something and we didn't think ahead to budget that in last year.
I think that that would be a reasonable, I think that would be a reasonable step.
And then July first, we have budgetary allocation. So if you're able to meet with your committee and come before council and say, we recognize you approved a budget that has a thousand dollars in it. We need these needs before the event or after the event or whatever. Should be coming.
There would be a deficit from next year's if you need it before July one.
No, no, they wouldn't come before July one.
Because we wouldn't have a council meeting before that.
No, I'm talking if you come July one saying, we need an extra three hundred dollars. Then I'm saying, if you come in March of next year, just.
It would only be seven hundred. Yeah, yeah. Perfect.
Spending that money on signs is actually, and if you, yeah, reuse those signs. Just don't put the date on it.
Right.
Or just say, you know, last Saturday of July.
Yeah.
And then there.
That is also what we did with the Daffodil Festival. We decided to keep it. Is there something else particular you're needing council clarification?
I don't think so. That is helpful to know, you know, council is committed to the event, wants it to happen. Because it kind of came down to the question of, you know, does council want city staff to help make that happen? Or should it all be the committee, you know?
And maybe we reevaluate at the beginning of next year. I mean, we could, you know, your committee will do a debrief, will ask you to come debrief with us. And then at like goal setting time or whatever, as a council, we'll look at what.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
Other inputs on the subject? So I kind of mentioned an action item that the council could take. Does anyone want to make a motion? An action item that the council could take, does anyone want to make a motion?
I want to just be clear on the language we're using for the staff support.
Yeah.
Um, just that they would. Reasonably use reasonable staff time, is that quantifiable enough?
Yes, knowing that council supports staff use in this direction. Should work for me, I mean, I'm not going to like overload anybody or. Cause then it then it's up to me to manage right and to manage how workloads are.
You're not going to give up on all your other tasks and just.
I I won't, I won't cancel the water treatment plant project.
No more grants, nothing else, just this.
Okay, I can take a stab at it, um I move to direct city staff to carry out Amity Day event duties. To spend a reasonable amount of time at helping the Amity Day Committee. Under the advisement and direction, shoot, sorry, I'm going to start over.
Yes.
I recommend that city staff, under the advisement and direction of the Amity Day Committee, spend a reasonable amount of time supporting the committee. And I move that the seven hundred and fifty dollar PGE donation to the city be put towards the twenty twenty four Amity Day.
Say again.
Okay, what she said.
Don't make me repeat it.
So we're recommending staff spend a reasonable amount of time supporting the Amity Day Committee in their functions as a committee. And the seven hundred and fifty dollar donation from PGE be spent on the Amity Day event for the year twenty twenty four. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes. Okay, with that out of the way, we have a cybersecurity agreement. Um, we have the background on this, we talked about this during budgeting. Nathan looked into three different companies, we have those exhibits in our packet. Genuine Technology Group was the recommended by staff, Nathan? Is there other things you'd like to add?
Not entirely, Genuine Technology Group did do a cybersecurity um risk assessment for the City of Amity in. May of twenty eighteen, uh that I have in my office, and so it was interesting meeting with them and, you know, they got a chance to ask. Did anything come of that, and I have also the chance to say, no. That's okay, that's what those things are for, um but. The only other thing I might add is that for their quote, they quoted, you know, thirteen fifty per month. I wouldn't be surprised if we find another, you know, workstation, maybe two, so it might be closer to fifteen hundred per month. But that put them kind of in the middle of the of the quotes that I found, um it it is an unlimited amount of labor. And so I appreciate that approach, just because right now. We currently get billed, you know, per hour or per fifteen minutes every time we call or talk to IT and so staff just don't. So there's issues with computers, you know, that stack up and. That could be could be alleviated um with somebody a little more involved, and and I think that's what Genuine will offer. They also, oh, what was it, oh, the other thing I was going to note, I am still hoping. Uh and still in the running for cybersecurity grants. The state is taking a really long time, I think it's their first time through the process, and so. They said that we, you know, our application had been passed on to, I think it's FEMA at the national level. Um but they just have to get approval back, and then that. Those grants, the the grant for that amount of, or is for the amount of thirty thousand dollars. And so that could cover essentially the first year and a couple of months worth of the cybersecurity services, so.
It's definitely needed. So I didn't know when it goes into. The ongoing reoccurring services and it says um the services enhance physical infrastructure security. Further up it says, like, this is a list of all the things we offer, but we only offer them if they are shown in your quote. I don't see that, the physical infrastructure.
Yeah, that, trying to read through it and see what all it's talking about. I mean, the enhanced security, it would be, you know, improved security on our devices. But the way Genuine sets it up, it's also, you know, mostly a network plus cloud environment. That most of our stuff is on their devices and we're just accessing it kind of through the internet, um through that network. And so they manage, you know, switches and routers and. And so hopefully that means that long term less, and they manage like the firewalls. So hopefully long term less.
So that's all, okay.
Will need to be here.
Um, and then my other question is, what do we pay now, I know it's very minimal, but that premises, will we still have that?
Um, so premises right now, the only, we pay them monthly for the Microsoft licenses, um which is. Remind me what it is, is it ten, so it's ten dollars per license, twenty five licenses, it ends up being two hundred and fifty dollars a month. The licenses, the Microsoft licenses are included in that fifteen hundred. Yeah, um so right now it's that two fifty a month, and then anytime we call them out or call them with a question. Um, it's like fifty dollars an hour, a hundred dollars an hour? Fifty, yeah, um fifty dollars an hour.
So maybe three thousand a year is what we're spending now?
Will I still be able to remote into my computer with that, cause we do that for premises too?
I'm sure Genuine will be able to find a solution for that.
They will be able to, so they should give you permission to.
We'll make that a need, and that'll be, that'll be the thing. Yeah.
Um, and then. It was very interesting to me in the legal stuff, and I'm sure this is with everything, but they say they can't. Guarantee, like they can never guarantee anything, and if it's lost, it's lost, you're going to find that in anything, right? But that, we've done our due diligence, so we won't get in trouble as an entity if we've taken these steps. Uh, it gets scary when you start reading into that, what they won't guarantee. Any other questions on this item?
That it would be better to be in this situation, making an effort to end up like pathology.
Exactly, I was just thinking about, yeah, and the school went through a real big.
And the school went through a huge mess.
And we know now not to say that would never happen in Amity, because things happen.
Mona Mona remembers that well.
Okay, um, so we have a couple of options for recommendations, but I would ask for a motion.
I move to approve the city administrator to enter an agreement for cybersecurity services for the City of Amity with Genuine Technology Group.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All of us in favor of approving the city administrator to enter into an agreement for cybersecurity services for the City of Amity. With Genuine Technology Group, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Now we are going to switch up F and G. And have the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund Contract Amendment. So here we have A or B, return all the provided loan funding and pay back the drawn amount with interest. Or what we've spoke about ongoing is approve amendment number three, which extends the project deadline to January thirty first, twenty twenty six. As water line line replacement in the area of Fifth and Stanley to the scope of work and revises the budget to reflect that addition. It was pretty straightforward in the explanation. This loan has an interest rate of one percent and thirty years, so we already had. Approval for the one point two million dollar loan, this would just be allocating those. Funds to continuing projects. So so we discussed and gave consent, but this is the actual amendment to the contract with Business Oregon, and it gives me approval to sign on it.
Okay, so we just made the agreement earlier that we wanted to research it, and now this is the formal.
Yes, right?
Well, and I'm trying to remember exactly how it was worded previously, we may have even said we want to do this project. But this is the contract amendment.
Yeah, I think we, Nathan got approval that yes, we wanted to move forward, but this is actual, the contract coming from Business Oregon to sign. And they're on board, it's all laid out, the original contract stays the same with the exception of this number three amendment that was in the packet.
Okay.
And it's the actual one I will sign.
We're crossing our Ts.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes, so.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something new.
Nope.
I move to authorize Mayor King to sign the contract amendment for the SDWRLF loan.
Saint Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund.
Okay, um, I have a motion in a second to authorize myself, Mayor King, to sign the contract amendment. For the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund loan. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Yes, it is, um and so our next item is the Keller scope and fee for. The water line replacement that we just approved the minute for. So because we've all agreed that we want to move forward with that project, we crossed our Ts, dotted our Is. This is the Keller Task Order and Scope of Work. And it would be the signed contract to have them do the outlined services for the contracted amount of one hundred and eighty one thousand dollar.
One eighty one one ten.
Yeah, thank you, I'm running out of words. One hundred and eighty one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Yeah. And that budget was outlined there, had a timeline. Nathan, anything to add?
No, nothing specific, Keller is ready to uh begin work.
Fantastic.
So um I will say this is an engineer supported project and a public works supported project and a community supported project and a council supported project. So this would be the first step to get things rolling.
Let's do it.
Or second step, we're on the second step of the night, but, yeah.
If you noted in the uh capital improvement plan from the Water Master Plan, this is priority project one B and two B. So.
And I just want to interject, I am so proud of this council because in the last four-ish years, we went from having. No priority project of the master plan done to being like far down that list, things are rolling, so. It's come at high cost. But things are necessary.
When I came on council, this was like a glimmer in somebody's pie.
Yes, yes, so um a lot of work has went into this, but it is happening. So I would ask for council's authorization.
I move to authorize the city administrator to sign Task Order number twenty two for Keller Associates to design the Fifth and Stanley Waterline Replacement Project.
Second. Uh, I have a motion and a second to authorize the city administrator to sign Task Order twenty two for Keller Associates to design the Fifth and Stanley Waterline. Replacement Project, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We'll move on to the Water Management and Conservation Plan, um my voice needs a break, so Nathan. Please walk us through this.
Um, so the City of Amity recently started the process of updating its WMCP Water Management Conservation Plan with the help of OAWU. The, we talked about it briefly in work session, um but the uh. The city will need to, you know, choose a few things that it's going to work toward to help people in the city itself manage. And can kind of conserve the water that we're using from the South Amo River. For the most part, um it's things like leak detection and um meter upgrades, which. Thanks to the uh recent meter upgrades, I was able to check off most of the boxes that Tim from OAWU gave me. But there were a few things that we could choose to do or that we could lean towards. Um and I wanted to get council's thoughts or opinions, see if there were any strong opinions. On kind of those areas where we could focus. Um, there's, you know, public education to the community to help conserve water, there's. We could, you know, do an annual event, we could take a tour of the water treatment plant. An additional question on technical assistance, uh if council feels strongly that the city should or shouldn't provide. Like leak detection tablets, low flow fixtures like showerheads or sink aerators. Those are, those items are mentioned because they're relatively cheap, easy enough for us to buy and kind of have on hand. And then, you know, if people are upset about the amount of water they're using, we can always recommend here, try something lower flow. But the. Tim, Tim noted to me that he'd had this this discussion in one other city. And the city council, or at least some members of the city council felt very strongly that. Public funds shouldn't be used for private interests like low flow showerheads, like we shouldn't be using. Public funds to buy things for somebody's home, um and so if anybody feels strongly about that, that would be helpful guidance. Or any of those other ideas.
Do agree, it should be public funds to buy personal items.
Yeah, I'm not so excited about showerheads, but I would be all for having some like leak detection.
Right now we have tablets that we give to customers.
Do we? Yeah, that's awesome.
I always offer them if they, if we're showing a leak in their admin, they don't have a leak, I give them a tablet.
Oh, that's awesome, I didn't even know that, so way to go.
But that might be something that we could offer at like National Night Out or other events, along with a brochure.
That's a great idea. Amity Day, little city booth.
City water booth, yeah. Um, I also, something we could easily do is even if we scheduled it, uh, once a month, water conservation tip going out on Facebook, so then we at least know twelve times a year, people are getting that. I think we've used the newsletter for that in the past.
Yeah, it's actually in my newsletter for September.
Good.
Where it says, usage information printed in the utility bill, I mean, we do that, right? Everyone sees their usage, so, unless it means something differently.
That, well, I've seen that mean a couple of different things, depending on where you are and your software, and I haven't explored fully what our software is capable of. Right now, it shows your, like, the residents' usage over the last twelve months, which is great. I've also heard that there's some out there that will show your usage versus your neighbors, so that you can, you know, say, hmm, I have a roughly same-sized house, same-sized family, why in the world am I using ten thousand gallons a month, and they're managing to only use three thousand, and so my bill is.
Yeah, see, I think that's really.
Maybe that's more than needed.
I think that's more than needed, because I don't think people need to be going to their neighbor and saying, how come you're using less water than I'm using?
Yeah, I see invasion.
But it was interesting when we did our rate water study, and the average residential user was fifty-three hundred gallons, fifty-three hundred whatever, and I know that my family four in a very small house consistently uses more than that. So maybe some insights like that, like.
I like that, you know, like.
Maybe you could say like an average user.
Yeah.
Yeah, not your neighbor.
My neighbor, I mean, I don't need to go knock on Rachel's door and.
I would gladly.
Sandy's door or anyone else's door and ask why their water usage is, what their water usage is.
My next-door neighbor's got a household of kids, and then my, I'm just me, so yeah, I usually have like a thousand dollars.
I mean, yeah.
I barely get over the.
Yeah, I don't need to ask someone's shower or laundry schedule.
Might be helpful to grab some of that data, like, do you know out of this many, um, water users, we have this many that use below the two thousand gallons?
Yeah, I, if a customer comes in, like, I can't believe my family, it's like, an average user uses fifteen hundred gallons a month. So once I explain that to them.
Fifteen hundred?
Average person.
Human being.
Per person.
Okay.
So once I.
I was the same thing, I was like, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred per person. So once I explain, if you have six people in your house, and your average is, you're right where you should be.
And so that's a perfect thing to let people know, like, in the newsletter, like, you're talking about, yeah.
Little tips, like, when you're brushing your teeth, you don't have to let the water run the whole time, you can turn it off.
Personally, I like our current leak adjustment policy. I think it's pretty fair. I know there was discussion on changing that, and some don't waive the whole thing, but how we just go back and allow for the one a year, and need proof that they fixed the leak, I think that's good. I'm not super keen on a presentation at the elementary school being our place. I think they learn about water conservation, but it doesn't need to come from the person that's, you know, the entity that's giving water.
I will note that Tim and I from OAWU and both find it interesting that a lot of the WMCP is focused on helping people conserve water, but the numbers, if we know that we're selling water to customers from a city perspective, we're not concerned about that water. We're more concerned about the water that's just disappearing. When we produce three million gallons, and we sell two million gallons, you know.
Where's the other million?
Where did the other million go? Those numbers are very hypothetical.
Right.
But, so, I mean, most of our, our plans, I, I feel like should be focused on, how can the city focus on that? And, and maybe that's where, you know, one thing that we've talked about briefly as a council is to create, come up with a CIP, like a capital improvement plan that's like short-term, not just the master plans, right? Like, which water line are we replacing this year? Which hydrants are we going to replace? To address some of those for that, that's a longer-term goal, too.
Um, I know in our Water Master Plan, one of the things that were called out were the hydrants, and I think that would be a very good place to focus our efforts. I also know that some of those, collecting the data on how much water we're losing is not going to be accurate until after we have the new intake and the new treatment center up and running. Until then, it's kind of like a lost cause, because we'll be switching over. And so I think, I don't know how to incorporate that into the plan, but if we're able to just say that, like, we want to isolate that data and then start tracking it down. But you have to have accurate numbers on the front end before you can see what's really lost. Because I don't feel very confident that we're able to track what comes out of the river versus what gets treated versus what makes it into town right now. As sad as that is to say.
No, I think you're right. I think that to get accurate numbers.
Um, I know at one point, it was quoted between, we were losing between forty and sixty percent within our own system, and so if the goal is ten percent or under, we have a long ways to go.
I don't believe it's that high anymore, but.
It shouldn't be. That, that was.
That was when the pipe from the reservoir had separated six inches, so.
Yeah. But we also aren't able to show exactly how much better we're doing, so. So, a year from now, this could be a big, a whole different discussion.
But, the, the idea that maybe the focus on the Water Master Plan should be on, on, uh, conserving within our own system right now, is maybe a.
Yeah, not the user.
Good area to focus.
The missing water, I definitely would prefer to go after.
I think the Water Man, Water Management and Conservation Plan that we have to make every ten years wants to see a variety, and that's why all those other things are in there.
Right.
But, from a council's perspective, I agree with you a hundred percent, like, we need to focus on what are we doing?
Because we have those, it sounds like, steps in place for the other things. It sounds like Tasha is doing, you know, some of those things in the office already, so. Yeah, if we can focus on those other things as well, that would be great.
And I know, um, in the past, it was during a drought time, but I reached out to the, just the extension service and got all those brochures on water conservation. I think they were shared around here. Having those around and offered wouldn't hurt, little things like that.
I was very pleased to note that a lot of the ideas that Tim suggested were either covered by, the meter upgrade that we just did, or the diligence that staff gives to our water billing. They, they do an excellent job of keeping track of the numbers, helping customers find, hey, I don't know if you noticed, but you have a small leak, hey, your usage is up more than normal, did you fill the pool, or did you?
You guys are awesome.
Yeah, you guys are great.
They do a great job.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Was there other inputs on this plan from council, or was there anything else specific you were looking for from us?
I don't think so. I think that's helpful. That's helpful to get kind of that initial feedback. That one's not too tricky, I mean, that one's just, we write it for the, to have the plan in place and work towards things, but it's, it's a little loose.
Maybe at a future event, we could do a raffle with like a, a basket of water conservation items.
That's kind of a cute idea.
I mean, so then we're not, we're not. We're not handing them out to everyone, but, but if we're going to be using public funds to put together that kind of thing every once in a while anyways, there you go.
How we define like a plush drop of water.
Yeah. Double whammy.
When we have our little table, we'll have one of those spinning wheels for a lotion flowerhead.
Yes.
Showerhead.
That's actually a good idea.
So maybe, maybe a small investment into those kind of things, but we aren't in a financial position to offer them to everyone.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, if nothing else with the WMCP, we will move on to the item that I almost asked to be put in the consent agenda, because it's kind of a good. Workers' compensation coverage for volunteers, so, um, this is resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, for Safe to Cover City Volunteers and Workers' Compensation Insurance.
I did add Amity Day.
Oh, good. Alright. Thank you. I would have never thought of it, but yes, thank you.
Yeah, we just did this, but it was probably a year.
I was gonna say, yeah, something we do every year, and it just seems like we just did it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh seven, a resolution extending the city of Amity's workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Amity.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. The last item of new business is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, Transfer of Appropriated Funds. This is a new one for us. Nathan, do you mind, uh, sharing the background and just talking about what we're doing with this resolution?
Yes, so, we had a few of our, I'd say a few, it was mostly water repair and maintenance, um, that ended up, so the materials and services section of the water fund ended up over budget because of all of the, the troubles that Public Works has had with intake pumps and, the, the water emergency that we had, and there's just been a list of things where, oh man.
Unforeseen circumstances.
The pump is down again. We're very excited to move to the new intake. We ended up a little bit over budget, approximately. We're estimating, we, we gave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room for, towards the end of the year, just in case something happens this month. But, we're hoping that, we're, we're pretty confident that that amount, that thirty-seven thousand nine seventy-three, will carry us across that line. The debt service, our interest payments ended up being a little bit more than our budget had estimated. And so we are hoping to increase debt service by twelve thousand for the water fund, and then twenty-five hundred in the sewer fund. And those amounts, that those increases are being transferred from our contingency fund. So in the water fund, we had it, we established it with a hundred thousand dollars in contingency, and we're pulling fifty thousand from contingency. And then sewer fund, we're pulling twenty-five hundred from contingency to cover that increased interest expense.
This kind of comes from last week, I think, on the, I'm gonna know how to go, like, within that fund, each line item on there, I thought it was the whole fund, so that's why I didn't worry about transferring. So it's just kind of being ahead so we don't get deemed this coming up here, and then we thought we're gonna have to supplemental budget, but it's the overall fund than if it's over a percent, so. Just waiting for the water clarification, but.
So.
We've got a handle on it now.
All of these changes are under ten percent of, within the actual fund, and so it's not the step up in budgetary changes, and I just want to add that that's what we have a contingency built for, is for these unexpected things to happen. So when you have, you know, fifteen million dollars and you're off by twelve thousand, you know, that's pretty darn good.
I do have one question. On the recommended motion, it just says transfer of appropriations, appropriations from one, increasing one, decreasing one. Do we need to be more specific than that?
I've since, it's the honor, it's been said, the resolution is fine, but.
Well, the resolution is probably fine, I'm wondering if the motion needs to be more specific.
So the motion can be.
Cause it's just approving the resolution, so it's fine.
This is attachment, oh yeah.
Okay.
The motion, cause the resolution, the resolution has the attachment, yep.
Because I, I'm seeing now that it's saying approving the resolution, so that's fine. It's just the other part, yep.
I attach how I'm going to do it.
Yeah, no, I read the resolution, the resolution looks totally fine.
The motion is just a little vague, but.
Yeah, the actual rest of the wording is vague, but the resolution is fine, because I read through it, it looks great.
Yeah, I've, I've never done one, so I'm like, I don't know what I'm doing.
No, you're, you're, you're quick, I mean, this looks totally fine, your budget thing looks fine.
And I'll just say, I watch numerous other budget and, and of your things, and this is very common. It's so hard to project to.
That's why I wanted like our public safety for next year, because it's in our general fund, where even like, we have three thousand dollars for this, and that's why I'm like, we can exact numbers, because it's so broken down in general fund, and I.
Well, and materials and, yeah, materials and services, especially with prices and things, you just can't know, you just can't know.
But that's why we have our contingencies, and that's why if it's under ten percent, we can pass a simple resolution.
Except we didn't have it, we had to pull from like, fund balances, then we'd have to, the supplemental.
Supplemental, okay.
Metals pricing is gonna go up, the tariffs just went way up.
Okay, I approve resolution twenty twenty-four, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, a resolution authorizing transfer of appropriations which decrease one appropriation and increase another.
Second.
Decreases one in a.
Okay. Because we need group approval. I have them.
Finest cheer.
I do have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, a resolution authorizing transfers of appropriations which decreases one appropriation and increases another. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. That was our last item of new business. We will move into department reports. I did not print your report, Nathan, so.
That's okay.
I read it.
There's nothing too exciting. Excited to announce the Safe Rocks to School Planning Assistance Grant. That will be a, a process with a planning group where, you know, they've done it many, many times with many cities and school districts, and so they come out and we walk through, you know, walk through the city, and they highlight areas where we need to make pedestrian improvements to help our city be more walkable and safe, particularly for students headed to school. So excited for that part. The two construction grants that the city submitted for Safe Rocks to School did not score well. There's a lot of other, I guess, higher needs out there. And so ours will not be pursued further at this time. The priority is other places, but hopefully with that planning assistance grant, we'll have a clearer picture on what projects should be applied, you know, for that construction grant, and then there will be a lot of data to back it up, that we'll be ready to go.
When, sorry to interrupt, but when, um, would that process start for that grant? Is that in the fall, or is that sooner?
They'll kind of start now, but with just, you know, a couple of meetings maybe, but their kickoff will be, or their, their bulk of it will be in the fall. I believe the walkthrough will be in the fall, and then, they're hoping, you know, they want school help, so.
So, yeah, the project management team here will get together and there'll be like a small series of meetings, but then leading up to that, there will be a lot of outreach, and then that walk-around that he talked about will be open to anyone that wants to come. Um, and then there'll be a community event here, and so the consulting firm actually brings people in for like a two or three-day period in town to do that. And they'll be hyped up before that, but that will happen in the fall.
Thank you.
And then, other than that, slurry seals are coming June twelfth and thirteenth, so next week. They're putting out door hangers and no parking signs again for those affected. They're putting out door hangers and no parking signs again for those affected. Those, the streets that get slurried will just be closed until the end of the day, but they should be open by five or six P M. Uh so it isn't too long of a closure, but. Or whether there may be some complaints or concerns, staff is braced. The, let's see. And you'll sure they just happened, I heard it went very, very well. Um the other thing. Oh, one other thing that Holly, our city planner, has asked me to ask about. Is when we would like to have our next joint planning commission city council meeting. On ADUs and short term rentals. I know it's been, we've been pretty busy, and so it's kind of. Um pushed back a little bit, but.
Input. I'm thinking it's gonna need to be July.
Yeah, June's out for me. It's gonna be a hard. Hard to get time.
Honestly, July is probably best for me, because August, September.
August is gonna start ramping stuff up coming to July's.
So maybe the second or third week in July, either the. Monday. One of those Mondays?
I will put some dates together with Holly and we'll figure it out, and then we'll probably poll you, so. That was all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Nathan? No, um anything to add to your report, Tasha?
I just remember the upcoming movie in March.
What's the movie?
Um in the past, we had a lot of sta- staff support getting it ready, but then not really at the event, is there anyone that is available?
June twenty, what'd you say, first?
Um so.
Do you have popcorn?
Popcorn movie, raffle.
I did add on the flyers, earn bucks, right?
Yeah.
I'll be there. Um, okay, so just so we know, everyone's welcome. Was that all, yeah? Oh, no, you said. And you do have a flyer?
Yeah, for the movie guy at the counter, or it'll be over.
Okay, I'm like. Okay. Public Works Library, City Engineering Building Report, City Attorney Planner, questions on those?
It was nice to see them.
I'll just plug for the library, the Reptile Man will be at the Fire Hall this Saturday, June eighth at three o'clock, everyone's welcome. Um and then if there's nothing there, we'll move on to business from the mayor and city counselors, Council President Dyke?
Nope, we already hit what I needed.
Okay, Council McCarthy?
I have nothing to add.
Council Shins?
Just a quick, maybe we need to talk about later, I mean, we talked about it briefly at a budget committee. About potentially needing to raise water rates again, and whether or not to do that sooner rather than later. So, I don't know if we want to. Address that in a future meeting or not, but. Put it on the agenda.
Maybe request a work session on the subject?
One of the things that we're currently working on is those fund balances that I mentioned, and water seems to be the trickiest one. Basically, the art of water line revenue didn't get recognized one year, so there's, it's like two million dollars off and. But we're trying to figure out where exactly it should be. We're working through the fund balance numbers, when we figure that out, that'll give us a much clearer picture of urgency on water rates. Cause if we have several hundred thousand, then, you know, we can go a little slower if it's. Three hundred thousand, then we need to move a little faster, but.
Yeah, but definitely the outlook to see if the C P I increases are gonna cut it, or if we're. Kicking that can again before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I I'd made a note of it, so I didn't want it to like slip through the cracks, so I'll bring it up.
Do we have a work session, a work session? Agenda item for this next one, I know we had some things that we were setting aside for the next several, and I didn't know if we had. Is that what we're gonna bring up in your report?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, well then, let's move on.
I mean, i- if there's a certain timeframe that we would like to see water rates come back in a work session, that may also be helpful. Whether we say, you know, August, September.
It might be nice to wait till we get the final audit too.
Oh.
That could be.
More accurate number for this year.
And so that would be, what, October kind of thing, and so. Then if we have those numbers, that would put us in line to change, to make any rate adjustments as needed before the January, when they normally are changed, so.
Yeah. So maybe, I don't know if we have a long term calendar, but a work session in November. Well, we would definitely need to have a work session discussion before. But then we could have a town hall in December if we needed to. Anything else? My final comment actually was.
Counselor.
Oh, Counselor Thompson, sorry.
I did have something.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry.
Uh I just wanted to report that the tourism committee is going to be finalizing our strategic plan. At our meeting next week, and we'll be bringing that to you all on in our July meeting.
That's exciting, yeah.
Can't believe I almost just skipped you, I apologize.
It's okay.
That's exciting that there's a strategic plan for tourism, that's like exciting.
We had a good, we had a good base to start from, but it's been, yeah.
That's, I mean.
Really workshopped it over.
I'm excited about that.
Exciting. Yeah, so, yeah, next month.
Yeah, and our our meeting will be just immediately following the Amity Days meeting, so if anybody wants to double header, it's gonna be a. A wild night town here.
Well, if there's three of us, then we have to.
That's true, okay, yeah.
Darn, because I was gonna.
So, only I get to double dip.
Any community members want a double header?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
There you go.
And you can always request the Zoom meeting afterwards.
Or I can just wait till the next council meeting when you do a presentation.
That's true, that's true, yes. Okay, now for my report or final comments, the one thing I had was, um we were talking about proposing skipping the work session in June. It lands on um Juneteenth. So it would need to be rescheduled for a different day. I'm curious, though, you said we have a list of upcoming items, do you have something in the forefront of your mind?
No, 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 I just thought we had a list, I thought.
I mean, we do have topics that need further discussion and some like wrap up, but there's nothing so time limiting that. I just wanted to ask if there's an objection to skipping the work session for June.
I will be skipping it regardless, so.
Okay.
Or it's great for me.
That means we would not see each other in a meeting until the July meeting.
Till the new fiscal year.
Yeah. Yes, and it will be the day before Fourth of July, so that was the other thing, will everyone? Present be able to make it to a July third council meeting?
Sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
I left my phone at home.
He's lost. But it looks like we should be fine to have a core mom that day. Yeah, I attended the Safe Routs to School Technical Assistance Meetings with Nathan. Also, we had another follow up on the House Bill forty one thirty four. Nathan will meet with community home builders tomorrow, Friday? Just to talk about that contracting, we got the news that um the funds will come through Business Organ, but it'll be a direct allocation to the city. So not a repayment, that makes it a lot easier to get work done faster. Our project is being, we assume is being reviewed right now, and then a um final contract from the state will come before council.
How's Goucher? How's the Goucher Street project coming?
Good.
Coming well.
Yeah.
Coming well. Coming along.
The easements are out.
I just see the the days ticking by.
No, we're within that forty days, and a majority of those are already buttoned up and good to go.
Okay.
Um and so as soon as those are done, construction is like poised and, I mean.
The uh.
Yeah.
The city, the contract with the contractors almost ready for signature, according to the engineers. They were working out, you know, insurance certificates and all that, but that should be ready in the next week or two maximum. Um and then the contractors kind of proposed schedules to mobilize and to start work mid-July. Mid to end July, and then that would put them done, they estimated done at around. Mid October.
He was well aware of the timeline and comfortable with it. So. But yeah, there has been no significant holdups, everything is just the process of forty days for this and needing two weeks for this, and then four weeks for this, so. And I cannot think of any other relevant updates, so. If there's not anything else for the good of the order, I'll call for a final motion.
I only second them. I move to adjourn.
Second!
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you, and we're just twelve minutes past eight thirty, so thank you all for your stamina.